Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco's workshop meeting. This council thanks you, the council thanks you for being part of city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-whoa/agenda. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, and/or by using the Pasco Ask Pasco app. And with that, may I get roll call, please?
Council members, Campos?
Present.
Milne?
Present.
Roach? Councilmember Roach?
Councilwoman Roach indicated she would be joining us via online.
Serrano?
Here.
Torres?
Present.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Present.
And Mayor Barahas?
Present. And with that, can you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we move on to item four. Any verbal reports from our council members? We have Councilwoman Torres.
We're all debating whether who wants to go first. A council member, Campos and I, attended Fire Ops 101 Thursday evening and also all day on Friday. Wow, it gives you a real inside look at what our firefighters go through during different scenarios, and the equipment that they need, and the team's effort that it takes on those different scenarios and calls that they go to. It was a real eye-opener, and I definitely could see why when Chief comes to us for certain funding, you know, it's for a real reason. So, I really appreciated that, and I will tell you, my back was really, really sore the next day. I'm good now. My knees are still a little bruised up, but other than that, all good. All in one piece. And I was really proud of Councilmember Campos, too. He did a great job. He kept up.
And with that, Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I know, I think probably all of us, if not, maybe, most of us, not all of us, attended the Cinco de Mayo festivities downtown this weekend. I was able to join for a portion of it, and what a fantastic turnout. That was, I think, one of the biggest we've ever had, at least certainly one of the biggest I've attended. And as continuously as it was attended, given the fact that it went over the entire course of the week, it really was very impressive, what the turnout looked like, how many people showed up, and people seemed to be having a really good time. Certainly, my girls enjoyed it. I enjoyed it. It was good to catch up and see a lot of people that I haven't had a chance to see for quite a few months at times. And as part of that, I was able to announce best taco in Pasco for the Pasco Taco Crawl, which is Don Rubio's. They wanted a fair margin, and they're, I think they're only about two months open over the northeast corner of Fourth and Court. And so, they're, you know, serving a fantastic set of food there. So, certainly get a chance to go check them out. They're, you know, small business, local owners, and they're, you know, this small business is doing good things in the community, so excited for all that, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos?
Milne, you had your light on before me.
Yeah, I also wanted to compliment on the Cinco de Mayo Parade. I thought our mayor did a very good job promoting the event. I was pleased I went. Again, it was a lot of fun. I really enjoyed myself. I was glad the weather was good. And also today, I did attend the Pasco Chamber Lunch, and also with our city manager, Dave Zabel, and able to represent Pasco. And they did, we had a presentation by Randy Hayden, and he talked about all the different projects, which are pretty amazing, what's going on with Dairy Gold coming online in two years, and Reserves coming as far as opening up. Again, that's 600 jobs with both projects. And again, some really exciting stuff coming up with Osprey Point as well. And then I also did get a, just real quick, I did get a shout-out by the Pasco firefighters about how they rescued eight baby ducks from some storm drains. And I had a couple constituents send me things saying that they really appreciate all the work that our fire department does, even though it was just little ducks, they thought it was really nice that Pasco went above and beyond to help the little guys. So, anyway, I just thought it was cool, and I just wanted to pass it on, so thank you, guys.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Campos?
Great. Again, just to echo what Councilwoman Torres said, firefighters, they do a great job. We got a taste of that. My forearm from pulling hose is still sore. We're trying to twist Chief Rosskey's arm into maybe figuring out a way to maybe pass on to his union to maybe go the same direction, because we think it would be beneficial. Also, on the note of Cinco de Mayo, I thought it was really cool. Everyone else has covered everything, except for, I thought it was really neat watching the Colville Tribal Dancers. I did, I got emotional. I was doing some people watching. I focused on the crowd for a second. And it seemed like everyone was passively listening to the mariachi. They're having a good time. But as soon as the Colvilles entered the stage, the people that were surrounding the gate, everybody kind of moved towards it, and you saw a lot of people with their phones out. They were actively paying attention to the presentation, and I kind of, I don't know. I don't know how to describe it. It was just really kind of a movie moment, where it seemed like everyone was genuinely interested to see multicultural display that was going on down there. So, I'm really excited that that was able to happen. As far as reports goes, I attended Ben Franklin Transit Operation and Maintenance Committee last Wednesday. Just as an update, we're expecting to see some sort of recommendation to the actual board on this Thursday. We got, it had been wishy-washy. It's been a hot topic for us for quite a few months. We, as a board, really came back and told staff, "Don't come back to us until you have a recommendation of actual action forward. We want one option. That's it." And I think staff heard us loud and clear, and we're able to try to get that out. So, hopefully, this Thursday, we'll be able to make a move that way. That's it.
Perfect. Thank you. Well, I will add some comments that I did receive from the crowd as we were rolling by in the parade. Several individuals made note to pass on the message to the organizers of the parade that it was a nice, short round, and that it was great that it was focused around the park, because a lot of families congregated on the park, and the kids were able to run around until we waited for the cars to pass around and hand out gifts. Another comment was, one of our officers, the lead officer, the one in the pickup truck, made a point to stop and hand out the stuffed toys that they brought and handed directly to the little babies, instead of throwing them out there and potentially, you know, hurting someone. But the individual, the person that was driving me in the very beautiful car, made a note to share the message to our police department that he appreciates seeing that community service portion of it. I did, like everyone else, enjoy the great food, enjoy the festivities. And comments from our Colville council as well, that they appreciate the diversity of the culture, the acceptance, and the welcoming of their culture, of them being there present. And so, just wanted to pass that down to our staff. Thank you. And Councilwoman Ro, sorry, Councilwoman Roach, are you online?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Do you have any comments to add before we move on?
Thank you for recognizing me, Mayor. There was a lag between the, this starting on my iPad and you all starting the meeting. So, I did want to say that I had the privilege to do the welcome on Wednesday night last week for the cultural night at the farmer's market. And it was a beautiful evening, and the performances were just spectacular. The same performers that came to city council last week and did the hula. They had more, they probably had triple the amount of people doing the hula that night. They had a mariachi band from Chihuahua High School, a couple different folklore dance groups, and then as well as the Colville Tribe. And just to echo what councilmember Campos said, the Colville Tribe's performance that evening at the cultural night was just incredibly moving. And there were people you could just see in tears, and they actually did a friendship dance where they had all the participants, if they wanted to, come and dance with them. And so, it was just, it was really special. And I was, I felt great being a part of it. But Wednesday, or Saturday at the parade, I have to say, there were so many people who were complimentary of DPDA and the efforts to put on all the festivities. I saw both former mayors, Mayor Watkins and Mayor Martinez, and both were beaming, excited to be there. And also, both mentioned the fact that they were overjoyed about the turnout of the recent vote for the aquatics facility. So, I just wanted to share that with you all, in case you missed them or hadn't seen them. Thanks.
Thank you for that. And with that, we move on to item five on our agenda, items for discussion. And the first item on there is Mid-Columbia Libraries Update. Director Ratkai?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, good evening. As you all know, we've had a 10-year agreement with Mid-Columbia Library since 2010. 2020 brought a one-year extension due to just COVID and, I think, the pandemic, the city and the library both focusing on handling pandemic restrictions and operations. So, we extended it, we extended it a year. Last fall, we did extend it to the end of June of this year due to just awaiting the outcomes of the Public Facilities District Aquatic Center vote, which could drive some development elsewhere. And a couple of other items that we're waiting for future library expansions. So, it brings us to this evening, where we have Kyle Cox and team from the Mid-Columbia Libraries to give a presentation and an update, and explore some strategy around the new negotiations to the new contract later this summer. So, Kyle?
Can you hit the button on the microphone there?
This one? Okay, there we go. Thank you. It says it right there. I'm a librarian. I should be able to read a sign right in front of me. But thank you for the assistance. Thank you, members of the city council. Thank you, city staff, Zach especially, for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. As mentioned, I'm Kyle Cox, the Executive Director and Chief Librarian of Mid-Columbia Libraries. I'm hoping to build on the information I shared with you last November. We've been in discussions off and on for over the past two years with city staff about current and future services for the city of Pasco. And looking to really, we're getting close to the end of our current extension and hoping to really wrap up and solidify some of the concepts that we've talked about in those meetings. So, what do we do? Mid-Columbia Libraries, we are in the business of enhancing our region's quality of life. We're a public library. As a public library, we provide access to knowledge and information. We do that three ways, primarily through our collection. Of course, when you think of a library, you think of books. Our collection is our biggest, most visible part of the services we provide. That's physical and digital, so eBooks, audiobooks, downloadable audiobooks. We have physical, so DVDs, films and series. We also have streaming video. We have physical and digital magazines and newspapers, as well as databases. The second way that we serve the public, enhancing quality of life, is through programs and events, like Storytimes, after-school programs, summer reading challenge, author events, programs from outside groups and organizations like the Pacific Science Center, designed to make learning fun, engaging, and accessible. And then the third way we do it is through community outreach and partnerships with our branches, like our partnership with the Pasco School District that connects Pasco students with our digital collection. That was very important during COVID. With the Latino Community Network, we worked and support them quite a bit, working with the chambers, et cetera. We believe that for public libraries to be relevant, we have to be active and visible in the community. We've been recognized multiple times by various chambers of commerce and the Washington Association of School Administrators for our commitment to community outreach and engagement. For those who might not remember, we are governed by a seven-member Board of Trustees that's jointly appointed by Benton and Franklin County Commissions. Our membership includes at least three members representing Franklin County. Our current board chair, my boss, Martine Valadis, is here, and he's a resident of Pasco. So, thank you, Martine, for being here. So, ample representation, though, of Franklin County on our board. So, very quickly, just, you might not be aware of this, how are public libraries set up in Washington State? So, there's a couple different ways. There's two paths. There's a county path and a city path. Counties by popular vote, that's on the right-hand side, can establish library districts. We are a special purpose district funded by property taxes to provide public library services. It is set up by popular vote. We were established in 1948. We went into existence in 1949 specifically to serve Benton and Franklin Counties. Cities, on the other hand, can do a couple different things. Cities can operate the Rome Municipal Library. The city of Richland does that. The city of Walwalta does that. A city can also, though, contract with a district library, that's what you do, or you can annex in. And I got to talk a little bit more about that path. But that's really what's set up under the RCWs in terms of the two paths for Washington library services. In our service area, of course, we have Benton and Franklin County unincorporated. They came in in '48. We have the city of Kennewick that annexed in, the city of Benton City, the city of Connel, Misa, and Clavodas. We contract through interlocal agreement with the city of Pasco, Prosser, West Richland, and then as well with Adams County Library District, which includes the city of Othello. Starting in the late '70s, cities were able to start annexing into districts. Prior to that, the RCWs didn't allow for that. So, cities across the state, in the '80s especially, started annexing in. However, in our region, in Benton Franklin Counties, many contracted relationships that exist from that point are still in existence. City of Pasco was one of those relationships. In this respect, MCL is very much an outlier. Most of the rest of the state has the cities annexed into the districts. It's not to say that it's wrong or bad. We're just unusual, and I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to revenue. Annexation is a different process. A city council and the library Board of Trustees have to consent to it, and then it goes onto a ballot. And if it approves, it's annexed in. The major difference is that a city no longer pays for services to a district. The taxpayers are taxed like a port or anything else in their county taxes. So, it's no longer coming from the general fund. However, there would be a new interlocal agreement regarding facility use, hours of service, et cetera. That exists in the other contracts that we have. So, I showed this to you last year. This is updated. This is the property tax levies for the library districts and neighboring counties. You can see here, MCL is at 29 cents per thousand for library services. Clickitat, which is part of the Fort Vancouver InterCounty District, based in Vancouver, is at 31. Yakima County has its own library district. It's 36 cents. Grant County is part of the North Central InterCounty District at 32. Adams County is at 42. Whitman is at 47. Columbia County is at 45, and Walwalta is at 42. And that's the property tax levies to support those districts that I mentioned. I had shown this to you before, but I wanted to kind of set up the discussion. When you look at funding per capita, which is of course different than levy rate, MCL has the lowest funding per capita of any of the 13 largest library systems in the state. You can see here, the systems in black are the other large eastern Washington systems. Red is MCL at 32 cents, or $32.10. North Central is at $52.22 per capita. Spokane, you have at $54.41. Spokane Public, which is a city library, at $46.30. And then Yakima is close to us, but a little bit higher, at $32.25. And that's from the Washington State Library. As far as our revenue breakdown, as I mentioned, we are an outlier in that we have a number of contracts compared to other comparable library systems. 59% of revenue in 2022 was coming directly from property taxes. That's annexed cities and the counties. 35% of revenue, which is over $3 million this year, is coming from contracts through interlocal agreements with the cities of Pasco, Prosser, West Richland, and Adams County Library District. As previously mentioned, this does make us an outlier. According to the state library, 47% of all contracted revenue in the state is just MCL. So, we have almost half of contracted revenue, because most people, most cities, don't actually contract. They have already annexed in. Again, we're unusual in that respect. But it does mean that we are actively working with our contracted cities, as well as our annexed cities, to be able to make it work. And again, there's different reasons why you would choose to annex in versus contract. This marks 112 years of library service in Pasco. There was a Carnegie grant that came to the city of Pasco, which opened in 1910, 112 years ago. And then, of course, you started receiving services for those who were in the county that are now in the city, started receiving services from MCL in 1949. And then in 1973, 49 years ago, the city of Pasco began contracting with MCL to provide library services. So, I'll talk quickly about our two branches, and then we'll get more into the meat and potatoes of why I'm here. So, the current building at Hopkins Street was built in 1962. It was opened and operated as an independent municipal library for nine years before the city contracted with MCL. The 59-year-old building has been remodeled multiple times, including different bonds, most recently in 2008 with a major technology and infrastructure upgrade that I know Zach mentioned in his background. And also in 2014, we had a minor remodel there, too. The library is often filled with families, students, and job seekers, many using the 43 public computers available in the branch. The Pasco branch houses a significant Spanish language collection, everything from picture books and board books to adult fiction and nonfiction. We also provide homebound delivery services to Pasco residents who are physically unable to come to the library out of this branch. You know, COVID was crazy for everyone, but even with COVID, our staff did a great job with customer, or I should say, community engagement and doing outreach. They visited summer camps and classrooms, provided school assemblies and storytimes. They hosted visits from schools to the library, provided information, community events, open houses. They went out to Captain Gray, St. Patrick's, Ochoa, Rowena Chess, Woodyer, Marie Curie, Mark Twain. I won't go through all of them, but have done a lot of work in outreach. They also hosted events like trunk retreat during COVID. And we just hosted the Dia de los Niños, Dia de los Libros event two weekends ago, which was very popular. We had 15 different local partners, from CBC to Girl Scouts, really to celebrate Day of the Book, Day of the Child. And that's been a longstanding practice that we unfortunately couldn't do during COVID. We're happy to bring back. Our second branch is our West Pasco branch on Ridley Drive. It opened in 2013. MCL paid for 100% of the startup cost per the current interlocal, and we also pay for the commercial lease on the facility. It is a proof-of-concept building. We knew we needed a library in West Pasco. You needed a library in West Pasco. We built it. It's only 6,200 square feet, though. It's way too small. And we knew that at the time, but we needed to get one out there to show the need and the demand. This little branch has the second highest checkouts across three counties. It's second only to the Union Street Library, which is 32,000 square feet. So, that little branch has a huge amount. If you use it, there's a lot of people in there. We have the full-service drive-through, which was the first in eastern Washington, the second in the state. Yet, the biggest challenge, of course, for this branch is it's too small. We know that. It's way too small. If you get a lot of people in there, it becomes very packed. Just to give you an example, in 2022 alone, just for storytimes, we've already had over 1,000 attendees. So, and that's only in the first four months that we had that many people. There's a lot of demand for resources out, well, in all of your city, but also at that small branch. So, thinking about the current interlocal agreement, which is 2010 through 2022 at this point, the initial term was 10 years. We extended it one year, as Zach said. We were uncertain, as everyone was, about the lasting impact of COVID on the economy. We didn't know what would happen. I think a lot of us were scared that we were going to be going into a depression, and we're just very hesitant to do anything long-term. Thankfully, that didn't happen. So, we also agreed to extend it for six months into 2022, and that was to allow for the results of the Pasco, or the Public Facility District Aquatic Center vote. So, the current agreement ends in June. So, we do need to come up with a successor agreement. And again, we've been talking with city staff about options, ideas. So, the current interlocal guarantees 16 open hours per week. As defined in the interlocal, that includes 40 hours a week minimum at Pasco Branch, and the balance, which is 20, at West Pasco. Well, we figured out very quickly that was not going to work. You currently have 50 hours per week at the Pasco Branch and 50 hours a week at the West Pasco Branch because of demand. You just have too many people that need to use those services. It verges somewhat unethical to only have the branch open 20 hours a week when you have that many people coming through the doors, going through the drive-through, using those services. So, Pasco, as a result, is receiving 40 additional hours per week more than contracted due to customer demand and use, and we just see the need for it, and that's why we do it. We also, as part of the interlocal agreement, were to construct and open the West Pasco branch. That was part of what we discussed and agreed to. Again, it was designed, built by a private third party. It opened in April of 2013, as I mentioned, at 6,200 square feet. It's eastern Washington's first library drive-through. It might be the only one still. It's a great model, though. People find it very popular. The startup costs were all paid by MCL. The commercial lease is paid by MCL, and it's the second-most checkout in MCL. So, again, very, very busy branch. As far as your customers, you can see here, 71% of your population has a library card, which is fantastic. You also have over 7,000 of your residents that are registered at non-Pasco branches. That means that 7,000 cardholders are going to another MCL branch. Because you're part of a bigger system, your residents can go all, they can use any MCL branch. And so, of that 7,000, a lot are going to Kennewick, especially to the larger library, because it is so much bigger than what's currently available in Pasco. You also have over 4,800 people, a lot of them are from Franklin County, that are registered at your branches, that are using your branches. We saw a major uptick in digital cardholders, for instant digital cardholders. That meant if the library was closed, you wanted access to books. We use third-party authentication. They could get that. That means they're not actually registered for full services. They're just using the digital collection. Your average age of a cardholder at the West Pasco branch is 37, and at the Hopkins Street branch is 32. Again, I hope you realize that it's a, they're both well-used libraries. We had over 400,000 items checked out in 2021. 32% of the checkouts were digital. That is a little bit lower than the district average, but that also demonstrates there's still a demand very much for physical items at the Pasco libraries. And then over, you can see here, we have 7,499 items were borrowed by Pasco School District students using the Sora platform in 2021. That means they can use their laptop, their Chromebook. They can get access through Sora, which is the platform that we use, that we have partnered with the school district and other school districts to be able to provide that. It was a major concern for us that kids were not getting access to books when we had that period of time where we weren't able to operate on-site, and of course, they didn't have access to school libraries. So, that's been very popular. I've said it before, I will probably say it until I die. We have one of the largest digital collections in the state. We actually have one of the largest digital collections. That's eBook, audiobook, streaming outside of Metro Seattle. It's something we're very proud of. In 2022, we have budgeted to spend $1.325 million on new materials. That's actually a very high amount proportional to our budget. We are committed to spending at least 15% of revenues on new materials. That means that we're consistently one of the top libraries in terms of percentage spent on new materials of total budget. During COVID, we directed a lot of savings right into new materials, which meant that MCL was the number one in terms of percentage of their budget going to new materials. We're very proud of that, and we're continuing to develop it. MCL has the largest digital Spanish language collection in the state, and we are the second-largest physical Spanish language collection in the state. I believe King County or Seattle Public has the bigger one. But considering we're little MCL, that's something to be proud of, and it's well-used, too. So, the future of libraries. When I met with Dave a little bit ago, he had asked, "What's the future of libraries?" And I wanted to hit on that before we get into the actual new interlocal and stuff that we need to talk about and agree to. So, the future of libraries, you can see here, you have a tablet plugged into a book. With the popularity of eBooks and downloadable audiobooks, are public libraries going away? Of course, they're not going away, but how they're being used is different than they were. Part of that is because there's a major uptick in digital usage, especially in adult fiction. We've seen that adult fiction is switching more and more over to downloadable. People want, we even have copies on the shelf, and they're still waiting for the digital copy. And so, that's something that we're struggling with, all libraries are struggling with, because it is two different platforms. How do you satisfy the needs of both customers? What we're finding, though, is that people are still using both formats. They're not exclusively going over to digital. There are some, and there are some that are only doing physical, but more and more, you're seeing crossover between those two groups. Also, the need for physical items is essential for children and students. Research has shown that over and over again for early literacy development, retention, that a physical book is better. They're going to retain it more. It's going to be a better experience. Although, a lot of our kids don't have access to eBooks, obviously. But for, especially for children and students, physical books are really important. We also have to consider digital equity. Not everyone has ready access to smart devices or high-speed internet. And so, to go completely digital means you're excluding a massive portion of your population, many of who probably need your services even more. And so, that's something to consider as we look to the future. As far as national trends, real quick, libraries across the country are focusing on co-locating branches with other public sector services. This is happening especially in the Midwest and back east, where they have less property. Primarily with community centers and schools, they're seeing more and more co-locating services of branches. It also means sharing startup and operational costs, which is a better return on our tax investment. Libraries are working to bring other agencies and nonprofits into the neighborhood library. So, you're seeing examples of workforce development, student success groups, and social workers, and counselors coming into libraries to provide services in their neighborhood. That's also becoming popular across the country. Also, libraries and schools are working more closely together on purchasing and circulating a unified catalog. It's something that we're starting to talk about. I know I talked with Michelle Whitney before COVID about this. It's something that we're starting to talk about. I know I talked with Michelle Whitney before COVID about this, but thinking about how we can partner together for purchasing new materials, and what that does is it means that students in one school district just got access to a lot more materials. It makes, from an access point of view, it means you have a lot more ability to get what you want. You might not have to wait as long. I know in Indiana, this has been a popular model to the point that what happens is that local schools essentially become public libraries after school. It's become massively popular. It really has returned on the investment significantly, and again, that's starting to happen across the country. And then, of course, libraries are being seen as opportunities for more meeting space and coworking space. That's also becoming very popular. If you're not having to dedicate as much of your floor space to books, because again, usage patterns are changing, you can repurpose it in a way to give value-added services. So, why am I here? To talk about opportunities for the next ten years. And again, MCL wants to continue to serve the city of Pasco for the foreseeable future. We're obviously committed. We want to be here, we want to keep working, and we want to grow services. We see the growth in your city, and we want to play an active part in growing services to meet your residents' needs. So things to consider, though. Well, the first one, of course, is money, and I, you know, have to talk about this first and foremost, because this really drives the rest of the conversation. When our current interlocal was essentially ratified by both parties, there was a modified growth formula in the payment structure. It's very different than every other contract that we have. It's different than what the annex cities pay and what the counties pay. It is, I could read it to you, but it's very confusing. Essentially, the standard, though, across the state is the district levy rate times assessed valuations. There were a lot of reasons why the city of Pasco pushed for this, and we accepted it. However, over eleven and a half years, and I'll show you why, this has caused significant funding drift and disparity from other MCL-served cities as well as comparable Eastern Washington cities. The current fee language is unsustainable, quite frankly. We can't keep operating that way, and I'll, again, I'll show you why. So I talked about twenty-nine cents as a district levy rate. When you look at the levy equivalent for what Pasco was currently paying in two thousand twenty-two, it is now about nineteen cents. It is nineteen cents per thousand. It's quite a bit less than, again, what everyone else is paying. It's less than what the rest of the district is paying. Of course, when you look at levy rates, that's dependent on assessed valuations, growth, all those things in there, but because of the current funding formula, Pasco was paying nineteen, the equivalent of nineteen cents per thousand compared to twenty-nine cents. When you look at comparable Eastern Washington cities, I have Pasco, Kennewick, Richland, which is a city municipal library, Walla Walla, which is a municipal city library, Wenatchee and Yakima. You can see what the, again, what they're actual, if they are part of a district, or what their equivalent would be if they're a city library. So Pasco, again, is at nineteen cents. Kennewick, which is part of MCL, it's annexed, is twenty-nine. Richland Public is just a little bit below Kennewick for the first time at twenty-nine. Walla Walla Public Library is at thirty-nine cents. Wenatchee's at thirty-two cents, and Yakima's at thirty-six cents. When you look at annual library expenditures as well, that trends, you can see right here with Pasco, in blue, it's quite a bit lower, as you can see from Kennewick, Richland and Yakima. It is in line, however, with Wenatchee and Walla Walla, but it's important to note that Walla Walla and Wenatchee are half the size of Pasco. So although your, your funding levels are similar, you're serving almost, actually more than twice as many people for that amount of money. And then when you look at library expenditures per capita as well, you can see because of the current funding formula, Pasco's spending about nineteen dollars and seventy-nine cents per thousand, or actually, nineteen dollars and seventy-nine cents per person. Kennewick is spending twenty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. Richland is actually spending the most, at forty-two dollars and sixteen cents per person. Walla Walla is spending forty dollars and eighty cents per person, Wenatchee forty-one, and Yakima thirty-two. One of the things that we had talked about with staff is looking at the impact on payment differential. Because you're not on the levy rate, what did that mean? Well, by restructuring the payment in the existing contract away from the district levy rate, it did contain city costs. That was one of the major concerns. We did not fully understand, though, how much that would impact drift. A big concern back in two thousand ten was containing city costs, which you did do. However, it caused a significant reduction in spending, both aggregate and per capita, for a growing city to provide library services, and I can show you the, the next chart. So you see here, over the course of eleven and a half years, the city saved three point four million dollars. Again, MCL was not saying we want that retropaid, but that was a lot of money the city saved over that period of time. Keep in mind that funding levels didn't come back to two thousand ten, or, we didn't get two thousand ten funding levels until two thousand fifteen. So it actually drops below, and it's not till two thousand fifteen that we go back up to two thousand ten levels. You can see here, some years, it's very minimal in terms of the increase that we get, and others, of course, are picking up. Again, you can see here, that's a lot of money that the library didn't get. We're not asking for it back, but we recognize the fact this is not a sustainable model. As this goes on longer and longer, the disparity is getting bigger and bigger. As far as factors to consider on facilities, I wanted to show you some information on comparable cities as well. Pasco is currently served by two branches, of course, Hopkins Street, which is owned by the city, and Ridley Drive, which is leased by MCL. We would very much like to add a third branch at the MLK Center expansion. We very much have been talking with city staff. We definitely want to do that. There's definitely a need. We think we can make it work very easily, and I think it'd be a huge advantage to that part of Pasco. We also are very interested in partnering with the city on a feasibility study to construct a new, large, Western Pasco library, hopefully co-located with a community center. We know this is years and years away, though. This is going to take a long time, but we know that you need a much bigger library. And I'll show you why. When you look at library physical footprint, again, compared to comparable cities in Eastern Washington, Pasco right now, between your two libraries, is at twenty-one thousand and change square feet. Kennewick is over forty-four thousand between two libraries. Richland is at fifty-seven. That's very big for one library. Walla Walla is at nineteen. Wenatchee is at twenty-four eight, and then Yakima, over three libraries, is at a little less than forty. So the value of MCL services, thinking about the past ten years and thinking about the next ten years. So what, what do we control? We control access to the collection. We control the collection. Facilities is a complicated issue because it's us working for the city, obviously, but we, as a district, buy that collection, we provide it. And you can see that we have a very sizable digital collection. Again, I keep bringing this up. It's very large. Oh, sorry, this is onsite access per week. So you can see that you have two libraries open a hundred hours per week. For Kennewick, you have a hundred and thirteen hours for two locations. The city of Richland is open sixty-four hours a week. Walla Walla City is open fifty hours per week. They're closed on Sundays. Wenatchee's only open fifty-two. Yakima, because they have three branches, have a hundred and twenty-three hours. Again, so you have quite a bit of access right now, and that's because we understand that there is very much a need. Library collections, that's where I was going with this before I got ahead of myself. You can see here, we have a very large digital collection. We also have a physical collection of three hundred thousand items. The city of Richland and Walla Walla are part of the state ebook consortium. What that means is they essentially give money to the state and they get access to that collection. However, they're competing with about eight hundred thousand other people for that. MCL's not part of the ebook consortium. Your customers, your residents, have access to that very large digital collection. They're not waiting with the other eight hundred thousand people for that. So again, that's something that we can control, and we're very proud of that. We put a lot of money and effort into that, and that's why we have really good checkouts. A question that came up was, you know, what would it cost to replace library services? And again, I get this as a theoretical number. But when you look at the value of services that, that Pasco is receiving right now, when you look at the digital, or the physical and digital collection, that's worth over twelve million dollars. You'd have to spend that much just to get access to what you have right now. When you look at the IT infrastructure, that's over two hundred thousand dollars. When you look at the furniture, equipment, fixtures and supplies in your buildings, that's over four hundred thousand dollars, and the current operational expenses is over one point three million. So you'd be looking at over fourteen million dollars to get the equivalent services in your city. So, thinking about the future, as far as the interlocal agreement, what have we been talking about? What do we want to get traction on? What do we need to get agreement on? We have to correct the funding disparity, and again, we'll work with staff to figure out how to get there, but it's something that we cannot continue indefinitely. It's just not going to work. We've talked about, do we do a graduated schedule or something else, but the current contract formula with the growth modifier is just not going to work, because that nineteen cents is going to keep dropping if we don't, and at what point, you know, do you say, how much can we do as MCL on that little money? But really wanting to look at adding a third library at the Martin Luther King Center, doing that feasibility study to look at a new, large, West Pasco library, co-located with the community center, which I think would be fantastic, setting up a reserve fund specifically to stock and open MLK in the new West Pasco as well, to expand services. Opening a big library is not cheap. You have to have a lot of money for furniture, equipment, technology and new collections. Increasing the hours of service, we could add morning hours at both current locations very quickly, and then adding staff, including new librarians and outreach staff, to serve your growing city. So there's a lot of pieces that are moving right now. Again, as I mentioned, we have partnered with so many different organizations in the community to provide value to residents of Pasco through community outreach, through partnerships, the Chambers of Commerce, the Tri-Cities Latino Community Network, of course, the Pasco School District, we've done a ton with, and we are looking forward to more partnerships into the future. So, speaking more broadly about MCL, again, we're talking a lot about the interlocal, that's why I'm here, but just so you know, we're also engaging in our region-wide community needs survey. We're currently in the, the focus group town hall phase. We're going to be doing a big survey across our region. We realized that, you know, my tribe, for example, happened in two thousand eighteen. It's been a long time since we really got a pulse on the public. COVID changed a lot of things. We're actually getting a lot of great information from the focus groups. People are missing a sense of community. People are missing the ability to come together. They feel a lot of isolation, division in the past couple of years. There's a lot of other great things coming out of the focus groups, but we will get the results of the survey in its entirety by July, and at that point, we're going to start our new strategic planning process. We are very much a community-focused library. We define success based on our community's needs, and so we want to make sure that we are developing a strategic plan to meet our customer and our community's needs. So, in conclusion, I know that was a lot of information. The future of libraries is very much community, connection and communication. I wanted to mention something that came out of Andrew Carnegie's mouth, and I love it. In the late nineteenth century, American industrialist Andrew Carnegie donated the equivalent of billions of dollars of his fortune to build libraries, including your original Pasco library, and he said, "To bring books and information to all people." Carnegie called public libraries "the cradle of democracy," where neither rank, office nor wealth receives the slightest consideration. The public library is for all people, and we are proud to serve all the people of Pasco. We look forward to reaching consensus with you on our next tenure interlocal agreement. Two thousand twenty-three will be fifty years that the city has partnered with MCL. And for that, and for the good that we do together for your residents, we sincerely thank you for choosing the Columbia Libraries as your library provider.
Thank you for that. Do we have any questions or comments from our council? Councilman Serrano?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. As always, a lot of information, but I gotta say, I'm left kind of scratching my head. I don't have an action takeaway. I know you need money. I don't know how much. I know you needed some type of agreement in six to seven weeks. I mean, I, I guess a status update on where we are with that, whether that's your ball or Zach's, would be helpful. Knowing that we just, looks like probably in a week or so, we'll have the final results of the vote. There's a levy that just passed. Again, trying to figure out what, what we're being asked eventually to pass. Again, I understand their interlocal resolution concept, but specifically, what are the numbers? I love the idea. We're investing a lot of money in MLK Center, so is the state. Before you even said that, and I guess I cheated of having read the packet, but I had, man, it's got to go there. But I think that's really, one, an update of where we are with, with seven-week window, and two, what the cost is. And if that's not available now, that's fine. Maybe staff can provide that information to us on the backend. And then there was a question that I had, probably more so for Mr. Ferguson. As far as building these reserves, could we potentially enter into a risk of gifting of public funds? If we're essentially bonding or, or helping finance reserves to build future project, and I don't need an answer on this now. If it's not off the top of your head, that's fine. But I saw that as a potential risk.
Sure, yeah. Unfortunately, it wouldn't apply in this situation because it would be two governmental entities, so we wouldn't have to worry about that. But great question.
Thank you. Mayor for Tim Maloney?
Thank you. I would be interested if, in answer to Mr. Serrano's first question there, from, from staff especially, is what the timeline looks like and where, where the input needs, is needed from our council. Obviously, we don't provide direction directly to you, Mr. Cox, but we will need to provide some direction to staff, so I guess we'll be looking for that. I don't know if today's the right meeting for it, but... So one of the things I've, I've noticed is, you know, we're, we're pretty close to the, the library, the Hopkins Library, I guess, though I think we always call it the main branch.
Yeah.
So we were, you know, we, we go there with, as a family, often. We're by there a lot, and one of the biggest resources we're seeing being utilized there is the computers.
Yeah.
Always busy. I noticed that that wasn't something that was a focus for your conversation today, but that's when I think of how our libraries are being used, what the community, this community in Pasco, especially on this side of town, needs. Computers and access to digital resources seems to be the primary thing. Can you speak a little bit about how the library is currently doing that and where you see the growth pattern or need?
Sure, and I'm glad you brought that up, Councilman Maloney, because when we did that remodel with the city back in two thousand eight and then in two thousand fourteen, that was one of the major priorities, because we saw the need with the digital divide, and that's why Pasco has so many computers, and it's used quite a bit because of digital access and the digital divide. What's interesting, though, is in different communities, we're not seeing that uptick. So we did major expansion. At the Union Street, we did a huge technology center as well because of, at that point, the need. What happened, I think, because of COVID and so many students getting Chromebooks, is that we saw that that wasn't as consistent in other branches. However, that's not true for the Pasco branch. As we've been talking about, for example, the MLK Center, that'd be another thought, is that we need to have a lot of public computers and support for that there as well. You know, because of space considerations with the West Pasco branch, we just didn't have the room to put in that many computers, because everything was a choice. You know, there's only sixty-two hundred square feet on that. But as far as thinking about the needs of Pasco and thinking about working with the school district, who has really good information on, who has access to the internet? Who has access to different services? I know other libraries have looked more at providing more suite-based software. If you don't have access to something like some of the Adobe products, because it's too expensive, that's something that we can look at, too. I know different library systems have done that. But I appreciate you bringing that up, because that's definitely used quite a bit. I know, talking with branch staff, a lot of people are job seekers as well. They've helped a lot of people apply for jobs on those computers. We, we feel like we're like a work source satellite site sometimes, because we're helping so many people.
Great. I appreciate those thoughts and that little more detail there. I mean, I, I think that that's something that we, we know this part of the community needs dramatically, and there's always offsetting. There's, you know, when we're talking about this, we're talking about additional taxpayer dollars going into a lot of libraries, and this is a service that, you know, is well-utilized. We know that. We can see the stats, and I appreciate you bringing the graphics and stats in about that. But we, we can't have that conversation without also talking about how much money we're actually saving people who aren't buying personal computers, because they don't need to, or they don't have the resources to, and they can go to this service instead. So while they're, you know, paying their taxes as well, either through rent or through, you know, the sales tax and et cetera, and we're paying, then, so we pay for the services currently through the general fund. I think it's also important to recognize that some of those people are not having to spend money because of the library system, so... My wife is a, obviously, is an avid reader and is borrowing books all the time, so I think just the amount of money we've saved personally off of purchasing books has been money well-spent. So continuing on that line of thought, though, you know, if you were a for-profit business, I would be excited about how much we're gouging you. But as Mr. Ferguson pointed out earlier, you're a public agency funded by tax dollars.
Yeah.
So you are a limited, you know, corporation focused specifically on providing a public need and a public demand. And, and I absolutely hear you loud and clear. We can't continue to get the service we're getting. In fact, we probably shouldn't be getting the service we're currently getting based on how much money we're paying. So I'm, I'm interested in understanding more what that would look like. I would also very much like to understand what the annexation process would, is, what that, how that would work, and what that would mean for our taxpayers.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, that's who we're all, you know.
Sure. So, and, and this, this came up in discussions with city staff, is that annexation would be interesting. What it would mean, though, and there, there has tax repercussions because of, we could, we're not anywhere near it, but a library district could levy up to fifty cents per thousand. And so when you're thinking about taxing capacity and everything else, that's part of that discussion. I know when we've talked with other cities about that, that was a concern, is how much does it impact what they can collect, or they have the capacity to collect. From an annexation point of view, what it would be is that the, we would have to talk, obviously, more, but the city council would have to be in support of annexation. The library board of trustees would have to be in support of annexation, and then it would go to the voters, and it would say, should we annex into the Columbia Libraries? At that point, if they approved it, and again, all the pieces come together, is that the city would no longer be on the hook, per se, to pay for library services. It would be like what you pay for the port or anything else. It would be under county taxes. It would be on there as a levy, and it would go that way. Now, what we'd have to do with the city, because we don't own any of our buildings, that's the other piece there, too, is we'd have to develop an interlocal agreement regarding use of the facilities, minimum hours of service, things like that. So it'd be very similar to what we have now. It just really changes the payment formula in terms of who's paying for what, because it's no longer the obligation of the city to pay for the library services. It's now the individual taxpayer that's contributing to the district, and that's really the ma, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's really the major mechanism difference, is that when you annex into a district, you are then paying taxes to the district directly. It's no longer having the city be a go-between and contracting for the services. It's no longer having the city be a go-between, um, and contracting for the services.
I appreciate that a lot. Um, for something like this, this is one of those areas where we as a city dabble in a lot of things. Our scope is very broad. And we're not experts on most of it. Um, we're, we do our best, right? And of course, we have staff members who are very much experts on, on each of these, these topical areas. It does seem like, um, the simplicity of us being out of the way on how our, on how our libraries are run. And let the, and let the, um, the voters more directly engage with that system through that mechanism without having to have this chain of events. And us having to negotiate a separate contract that may look different from the other contract, administrative burden that goes along with that, coming out of the general fund. I'd be interested in understanding and exploring that more for sure.
And there are, um, attorneys that do specialize in annexation. I mean, there, and we, we're familiar with different, uh, districts that have worked with attorneys on that. Because it is a very complicated issue in terms of taxation and everything else. The, the mechanism at which to do it is actually pretty simple. It's the, it's kind of the effect, the long-term effect on both parties with regard to taxation and capacity.
Great. Appreciate that. And that's, that's where I'd like to explore for, um, funding mechanisms for long-term. I understand that may not be, that, that doesn't solve the near-term problem. That we still have to solve, but I'll be supportive. I, I'm at this point in time supportive of exploring it and understanding that better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Compost, you had a comment?
I changed my mind.
Okay. Uh, well, again, uh, Mr. Cox, thank you. I did not see that. Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, good evening, council. So just from a timing standpoint. Uh, as has been stated here, our agreement, uh, terminates June thirtieth, I believe. Yeah, so that gives us, uh, several weeks to get this done. Tonight was just to kind of get council familiar, uh, with some of the basics here. And, uh, what one of the, one of the primary, which we've been talking about the last five or ten minutes here. Uh, deficiencies, uh, in the current agreement is, is we, you know, we find ourselves paying significantly under. Uh, what other agencies are paying on a per capita or per assessment A B, uh, basis, uh, for the same service. And so our conversation over the next few weeks will be, uh, you know, looking at a couple of alternatives to try to address that. And then we'll bring, bringing that to council again at a workshop setting, uh, before we ask you to take action on it. So we'll try to get that done, uh, with enough time for there to be a, an iteration or two, and, and make sure council's comfortable with what comes to you. With an expectation for action. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And again, Mr. Cox, uh, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Just one other opportunity. Councilwoman Roach, uh, do you have any comments? It looks like there's.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, for asking, but I do not.
All right. Thank you. So again, just wanted to say thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Uh, I for one have, I grew up in the libraries, basically. Um, I took advantage of the summer reading programs. Took advantage of, currently still taking advantage of, uh, now the digital format because I'm always on the road. Um, that works out for me. So, as, uh, our city manager indicated, we look forward to, uh, figuring out how best to, um, continue the partnership.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, council.
And with that, we move on to our next item, which is the update on the Tri-Cities Animal Authority operations and facility. And again, Director Ratkai.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Good evening once again. Wanted to bring an update on, uh, the operations at the Tri-City Animal Shelter, along with, uh, an update on the shelter. And, uh, what to expect over the next couple of months. So as you're all aware, uh, Benton Franklin Humane Society took over on an urgent basis last November. Um, due to some, um, actions taken against the previous contractor. Um, Benton Franklin Humane Society is based out of Kenwick, and, uh, they stood ready and able to jump in. And really take on the challenge of taking over the shelter with really probably less than a day's, couple hours notice. Um, the challenges, uh, immediately upon arrival was obviously transition of staff, uh, some attrition of staff that, uh, left with the former director. Um, staff that just didn't work out under the, the, the policies and, and model of the humane society, and then hiring of new staff as well. Training of staff into the new process. Um, there was a number of records that were, uh, a number of animals on site that didn't have a record tied to them. Um, record-keeping wasn't that good, so coming into what animals had been fostered out in the community, which animals needed food and medicine. And really just trying to figure out, okay, what do we have here as, as the takeover? And how can we support our, uh, community and the current animals on site, uh, during this time? Also, um, as I stated before, Benton Franklin Humane Society is based out of the city, uh, within the Kenwick city limits. So this is a second site for them, uh, across the river, so certainly monitoring and managing day-to-day operations, uh, was a little bit difficult. Um, also, call volumes coming in from serving a civic need that had a animal control enforcement capacity for three cities. Um, based upon their previous, uh, business model of a shelter in Kenwick, uh, call volumes increased. And, and certainly that demand for more proactive and reactive need in the community increased as well. And a big part of it, too, right then, was, uh, establishing a new team and a new team on site. Since that time, uh, Benton Franklin Humane Society has worked hard to re-establish and update records, uh, make sure that every, all the records are, are kept well. They've worked with the current volunteers and new volunteers on the site to develop a new training program to reduce liabilities. Um, help, uh, assist volunteers, dog walkers, and, uh, uh, canine handling and, and other aspects of the job. We also, uh, brought the fleet of animal control vehicles and transfer vans into the City of Pasco fleet. Um, which helped address some significant deferred maintenance issues that we had seen from previous contractors. And, um, brought the, really, you know, to be able to provide reliable transportation for the civic purpose of animal control. And the transfers of animals to new adoption facilities. Um, there's also a new animal control officer hiring process as well, uh, which includes a little bit more profound background checks. Um, to ensure that the, the public face of the animal control community is, uh, operating in a safe, you know, reliable people, safe, reliable nature as well. So the Animal Control Authority, which is the three cities, Pasco, Kenwick, and Richland, uh, we've met a couple of weeks ago. We meet regularly, but we met with leadership of the three cities a couple of weeks ago. And agreed that at this time, with the, uh, um, expiration of the contract, the emergency contract at the end of May. That an extension to Benton Franklin Humane Society was warranted, um, based on them being a qualified organization. Certainly a willingness to step in on an emergency basis and a willingness to keep working with the community, uh, despite the numerous challenges, um, faced. Uh, they've been established in the area, and, um, the ACA has proposed among leadership a two-years extension, which we're working on those documents, uh, currently. Uh, between the two parties. So what's next after this? With a two-year extension and, uh, um, a more solidified contract, uh, timeline. Uh, Benton Franklin Humane Society will continue staffing up. We're looking at staffing at, uh, customer service, animal care technicians. Animal control officers out in the community, really solidifying that outreach, uh, to bring more staff on there. Transition of records and better upkeep of records. Uh, as you all know, the Pas, City of Pasco is the operating jurisdiction for the Animal Control Authority, so. Um, contract award and stewardship of public records rests with the City of Pasco. So Pasco City Clerk's Office has worked extensively with, um, the staff at the Humane Society. That the records they keep in their actions for the Animal Control Authority are public records. They have to be kept a certain amount of time. And produced when they can, um, you know, when requested, and, and make sure that those are kept in a, in a, in a good spot. There's also transition of animals. We talk about the, the current condition of our facility here in Pasco. And, uh, where we can transition animals while we work on the new shelter, uh, to keep them in a safe and immediate area. And then obviously continue the new shelter project, which we'll talk about next. So we are approaching, uh, near ninety percent design for our, uh, shelter project. Um, the current site that's proposed is directly to the east of the current shelter, um, facility. Which is off Eighteenth Street, or excuse me, Eighteenth Avenue and Washington Street, near the Booth Little League Baseball Fields in Pasco. This was originally proposed to be put to the west of the current facility. That was found to be in a registered floodplain. So development in the floodplain is, is quite arduous and difficult. So we moved it to the site directly to the east. This would keep it in the same area that the animal shelter has been known to be in for decades. Um, it's also, uh, near the, uh, Sacagawea Heritage Trail along the river, which has been a popular area for dog walkers. It's a peaceful area for, uh, shelter dogs to go take their walk, get their exercise. One thing that, uh, delayed the project originally is, uh, obviously site analysis for this site as well. Since it's a new site, we had to do geotechnical investigations. Uh, we had to look for Native American artifacts through cultural resource exploration. Our partners with the, uh, Army Corps of Engineers own the property to the south, so certainly, uh, giving them the heads up that we're developing in that area. If there's any, uh, um, uh, sort of what we call like a little comment period for them to ask and submit any direction that they would need, uh, for development there. But as you can see, it's just a very simple, very functional shelter, um, metal siding. We're looking at about ten thousand square feet with, uh, the ability to expand as the community grows and as the need grows. Um, and that was part of the concept design, was to have a plan that's easy enough to, I always equate it to, you know, Lego pieces. Um, just to add another brick to the building to expand out the wings and, and, and help out there. You're all aware of this because we had to do some, uh, public improvement contracting, but, um, some of the other areas that we have to do for new development. We'd serve any development in this area is expansion of the water line along Eighteenth Avenue, and then expanding it east on Washington Street. Certainly repair the roadways that we tear up to add a new water line. Um, expansion of Washington Street to include some on-street parking that can help serve the shelter customer need, but also overflow for the Little League fields as well. And then relocation of the Sacagawea Heritage Trail around the property to continue that regional basis. So what we talk about with our current shelter, um, a timeline for construction of a new shelter, the six-million-dollar project that the three cities have going. And, um, really seeing the need and the condition of our current shelter is, um, our proposal that we do a renovation for expanded capacity. Immediately at the Benton Franklin Humane Society site in Kenwick. If you look at the visual on the board. Um, the circled site is an outbuilding that, um, has been looked at by contractors. It can handle, uh, uh, new kennels through a tenant finish for both the cat and dog population of Tri-City Animal Shelter. In addition to that, uh, it can hold, um, office and customer areas as well as staff areas. And offices for the, uh, animal control officers as well. Excuse me. This would be a single location for Benton Franklin Humane Society during this, uh, two-year process to better help. Um, engage staff, uh, supervise staff, but also, uh, provide a customer service interface as well. It certainly is a newer facility for animals and staff, so clean, new facility with new equipment in it. Um, and then why would the, the three cities invest in their property if we have a two-year contract? Um, having this additional expanded space can serve as a permanent, uh, emergency shelter for the region. So as we look at, uh, disaster management and some of the items that we have to have in place as communities. Uh, sheltering facilities for animals, whether it's a natural disaster that occurs in the Tri-Cities or elsewhere in Washington State. Is part of, uh, sound planning for disaster management, so this would be through a memorandum of understanding that this would be additional capacity for. Should, you know, hopefully we don't, but should we need it in the community? Also, if you get into cases where you've got, uh, animal hoarding and you need that extra space to take, you know, fifty dogs or fifty cats. Out of a certain area and house them right away, this provides that area there. So we look at the estimates here, be ten-week regional investment. Um, Benton Franklin Humane Society would put in twenty-five percent. As will the other three cities, uh, looking at about a hundred and thirteen thousand for the tenant finish as well, so. That's something we wanted to introduce to the councils. We were at Richland Council last week and Kenwick Council the week before. So that we've been, uh, making, making the rounds around the Tri-City here as well, so. Um, that's our quick update from the operator and contract administrator's perspective. I do have Autumn White here. Um, she looked to introduce herself to the council and, and say a few words, and then we'll stand for questions.
Hi, I'm Autumn White. I'm from the Benton Franklin Humane Society. I'm the executive director. I've been there for just about five years, coming up in July. And I come from Oregon Humane Society, where I was there for twenty-five years, so I bring, uh, great knowledge of animal welfare. One of the things I want to say that I didn't get a chance to say at the other councils is, first of all, thank you for being so welcoming and so kind. But what I want to say is that we knew this was going to be a challenge. We knew taking on an additional thirty-five hundred animals was going to be a handful. What we didn't expect is the abuse and the untruths that we have been receiving from the public. And perhaps you guys as well have been receiving them. So we work hard to keep our standards high as Benton Franklin Humane Society. We'll continue to do that. It is a struggle in this building to portray that we're giving the best care to the animals. Because it's a rundown building, as you guys know. Um, so this would be a great advantage to the pets and the community. To, um, to contribute to this, this project. And I just want to say thank you again for being kind and welcoming to us. And I'm here for questions, if you have.
Thank you, Autumn.
Any comments or questions from our council? Uh, Councilmember Mill?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, a quick question. You know, obviously Benton Franklin Humane Society has a, a good reputation. Why didn't we use them years ago? Why did we go down this other path? Um, and now it seems like we got mud on our face. And, uh, just to like, an example is I had a, had a constituent call in, in my district. Uh, she donated a couple thousand dollars to the previous animal shelter, and, uh, it was actually, Mrs. Guley, she told me I could say her name at Ivy Glades. And very unhappy, said that basically, you know, she didn't want to give because we had squandered away her money on the previous organization. So why didn't we use them years ago? Why did we go the route that we did?
Well, I think as we work with, uh, three or two, uh, two additional partners on this, um, the previous contracts, the previous RFPs we issued. I think it was focused really on cost at that point as well, um, just to kind of see how we could deliver the service for, uh, the most efficient means possible. The last iteration, Benton Franklin Humane Society did submit, um, they identified the costs that running a shelter of this ilk would be. Um, with our partners, uh, we went to a, a different direction, obviously, um, based on total budget numbers, so.
I'll just, that was a bad idea. Um, I guess, uh, my other question would be, uh, I know I've been very supportive of the new facility. I've been down there. It's, it's very shameful, actually, in, in a way, and I realize it's not all our fault. But as a council, we should be, take pride in our animal shelter. Um, my question is, I know we've had delays. What, uh, what kind of timeframe are we looking at when this will be online? I know we've talked about things for a long time. And then also, are all the other two cities still online with their support? I mean, nobody has pulled any, I hope, and nobody's pulled support concerning how long this project has taken. Can you give me clarification on that?
Yeah, we expect the next couple of weeks from our architects to have, uh, a truer sense as we approach and get the ninety percent drawings released, as far as the timeline goes. Um, as far as the, so I'll be able to return to council with more, uh, true timelines at that point. Um, as far as our partners go, we have full support and full continuation of this project from Kenwick and Richland.
Okay. And then the final question, I know, uh, at my business, a lot of commodities have like gone through the roof, whether it be concrete, lumber. Uh, nails have like tripled in price. Are we still, I mean, for the money, the six million, are we still going to get the facility? Or are we gonna have to shrink it down even more with just the way inflation and, and labor costs? Can you clarify any of that?
I think, is, I think that's certainly a concern of the, the team and our construction management partners that are helping us with that. We have the same firm helping us that has helped us with the fire stations that have come in at a, at a pretty reasonable price over the last couple of years. We understand that, um, supply chains and commodity costs are, are rising. Um, we'll, we'll have a better picture when we get our estimates in a couple of weeks at this. Um, we're certainly working to try to, uh, use more efficient. Material, I guess, efficiently use the materials that we have on hand and, and try to find, uh, materials such as, you know, like, like the steel siding, things like that. That, um, may have less volatility in the market, but I can get a clearer picture of that for you.
Okay. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Compost?
Uh, thanks, Director Ratkai, for bringing this forward. Uh, quick question, can you explain when you're up-staffing and stuff like that? I think I heard you say you were gonna have vet techs on staff or not. Were you gonna have any sort of veterinary care?
Currently, we are outsourcing our veterinary services to, um, Horseshoe and, uh, PES. Uh, they are emergency clinics, and of course, with the emergency clinics comes double the vet bill. Um, we have had, the Benton Franklin Humane Society has had the, um, uh, position posted for nearly nine months right now for a veterinarian. The field is very hard right now. They're all unicorns, and so it's a field right now that's very challenged to find, uh, the, the team. But yes, it is our goal and our plan to hire a veterinarian and make sure that the animals receive the, the care when they first get there. Versus, versus having to drive them to emergency vet clinics.
Excellent. Um, I think that's all I've got.
Thank you for that. Um, Mayor Perdell Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Ratkai. And pleasure to meet you. Thank you for coming down. Um, so a question I had was, um, what will happen with the existing animal shelter? My understanding in the past has been that was going to continue to be utilized as the, as an emergency overflow sort of facility, as well as potentially some office space. Now, of course, the, the personnel in charge and, and the entire structure has changed several times since then, and it, this process has taken longer than we expected. Um, so can you speak to all that will happen to that building?
Uh, we will, uh, once the building's vacant, we'll be doing some significant assessments, including industrial hygiene assessments. Um, hazardous materials, uh, it's had decades of use for an animal facility. And, uh, so we would certainly assess the building to see what we can do to mitigate that, weigh those costs against what it would be to. What it would be to utilize the facility or just completely get rid of the facility, so. Um, we certainly could see there could be some potential there, should it be properly mitigated, but we would certainly examine what we have inside and what we're, what we're faced with.
Okay, cuz when I'm, when I'm looking at auxiliary shelter, um and that discussion there. I I kind of had expected all of those items or most of those items would be part of the, a use of the existing facility and the interim while we build the. The new facility, and it sounds like this is be going a different direction than that, that we. Is it, would this be vacating our current facility while the construction was going on? Can you, can you speak that more? I I'm I'm unclear what the picture of that is.
Yeah, that would be the intention, um to vacate the current facility. Uh, get the animals and staff out um while the construction's going on.
Uh, we're, we're not tearing down that building before we're constructing this new one, so the, we'll just be vacating that building. Alright, so I'm struggling with that a little, cuz that's certainly not something that's within our budget, and we end up, we, and I believe that they will, we're gonna see the construction of the new facility is not going to go down in prices as, as we were discussing with commodity prices, materials and labor are all going through the roof. Um, I would, I would be surprised if we were able to keep within our current budget and, you know. I know we'll, we'll do the best we can. So when we're talking about adding additional funding and requests on top of this, it's a little bit of a struggle for me to wrap my head around for seeing this the first time. So that's a, that's, I I have, I would like to understand better the full picture of this, what's gonna happen with our facility before we commit to building a. Um, additional auxiliary facility. For for some of this, I understand that from emergency state management perspective, having a facility right next to another is not a backup. Um, but I just, I wanna understand that better if I could before, before we come to a decision point on that.
We can bring back a statement on the current facility to the council.
Great, thanks. And and just strategically, how do we wanna go with that? Except we're gonna say, we're gonna vacate that facility, it's not salvageable, we need the new facility. Um, I can get on board with that, but I need to understand what the full, the full picture is, um not a half measure there. Um, and I I do appreciate the 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 hard work to come up to speed on this, and I know there's been historically a lot of challenges with this, um. But I, you know, I I think that we 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 all are aware that we, we've kind of lost a lot of faith from the public in our ability to manage this at all. Um, so we have a lot of volunteers that are very upset and have been very upset for a while. Um, and I very much wanna understand how do we rebuild that relationship? We have a lot of animal lovers. They're very vocal, they're very active, and they're willing to spend their money and their time to try to help animals and. I don't necessarily feel like I have, from this presentation and from anything else I've heard, a full faith that we are going down a direction that works for that. And that will reestablish that confidence in the community that we need to have for this, so. Um, when we're talking about a two-year contract, I understand from a logistics perspective that to to have some stability for the staff. Um, that we're hiring to be able to be an attractive location to hire qualified staff. You don't wanna talk to a, a um. A veterinarian and say, we're, we've got a year-long contract and then you may have to go, uh who's gonna, that's not gonna be attractive, but I'd like to understand, you know, how are we gonna be able to really build that relationship for the two years? And where strategically, how are we gonna know where to go from there? Just, I think we have a lot of questions about structurally, how is this gonna work? Um, stemming from the fact that we haven't done a good job in the past um at managing this overall process. Um, as, has come very publicly to light, so. Um, nothing about anybody is working. I I hope that doesn't come across as some sort of attack on anybody, but just structurally where there's, there's clear deficiencies here that I I. Need, I need to have confidence that we're moving down the right direction before, you know, I wanna support continued changes to our path and spending more money. Thank you.
You were pointing that way, sorry. So I just have a little follow-up to that. If you can also provide um some kind of um document that shows the financial internal controls that will be used. Just to make sure that, you know, that we have that reassurance that there's, that there's something in place and that we won't have that incident happen again. Um, and not to say, you know, that you will do that, but, you know, just for reassurance. Also, um just a quick question on the outbuilding, wh- is that currently being utilized or is there anything in the outbuilding?
Yeah, at your, at yours.
Sorry, I wasn't sure who to direct that one to.
The Emergency Animal Shelter EAS, uh which what we like to refer to it as, uh is currently just a storage area. It used to be um a railroad office space, so it has a nice large warehouse. It also has the office area. It has the in and out water, electricity, all of that great stuff, so. Um, it could be used as that, and I just wanna mention that you have great points and I hope you get those answers. Um, but this shelter needs to be put down. It's, it's lived its life, and I just also wanna mention that. The area and the, i- i- if the shelter stays in this area, it's gonna continue to be poisoned. It just, it has to move somewhere else, perhaps for a period of time. But it, it just needs a, a new feel and it's a new overhaul, and so trying to do that. From the outreach or from the location that we're at, and there has been a challenge. Um, also, folks believe that this place should be run like a uh a sanctuary or some type of animal. At the end of the day, it's a business and I run it like a business. We have revenue, we have expenses, we have a full budget that we can certainly provide for transparency. But I just wanna say that it, 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 it is a business, and it needs to run that way, and so. We have policies, we have practices and procedures, and a lot of the folks don't wanna abide by them, so that's the struggle that we've faced. So having it in one spot, this is how we do it here, it would, folks would be coming to our facility, this is how we do it here. Versus us coming to them and them telling us this is how they do it there, so. Thank you.
Could you, um, I had a question for you as well? Sorry, sorry, Mayor, I just wanna, follow up, uh, so the contract, like when we're talking like two-year contract, is that the norm or do you a lot of times have with other cities like a longer contract period?
This whole city is not norm. Um, this, this whole practice that you do here is not normal. Um, I have coached and uh consulted with many shelters across the Pacific North Northwest, that's what I did before I got here. And this is one of the most unique situations. It's also challenging to have one person such as myself having to report to three cities. And get clearance for three cities, so usually each city would have their own animal control or even each county, so. Franklin would have their own county, Benton would have their own, excuse me, shelter. And right now Benton County does have an animal shelter, which is also an whole, another wrench in this weird norm here. Um, but you should have county animal shelters. Um, so this contract thing, we're just jumping in because we see the need in the community, and we wanna make sure that the animals are served and that the community is served properly.
Okay, and then uh another clarification, I know um during like COVID, I went down there and saw there said there was a lot of. Dogs and cats being dropped off, um, you know, abandoned or whatever. Are we seeing like, now that Co- COVID has kinda gotten away, are we seeing like? Coming back to normal levels or is there more? I know like right now, I heard there was like a whole bunch of really need for like foster. People to take care of the dogs and that the animal shelters were being overflowed, is that like a true statement or is that like just a rumor?
Nope, that's true. Um, just talking to my peers across the nation, it's becoming nationwide, so I think COVID hit us a little bit later. Then it may have hit the bigger cities. Um, we do have a, a, a food bank where we provide free food to the community, and it's been exhausted almost weekly. Uh, we have an overflow of folks coming in looking for free food and help other ways, and so. We're starting to see, uh, folks are not coming to reclaim their pets, they're surrendering them higher right now. Um, so I don't have our numbers exactly, but I certainly can provide them if that's what you want. But I can tell you anecdotally, it, it's heavier right now than it has been in the last couple of years.
Okay, I'd heard that uh people were going back to work and since they weren't at home, they didn't need their pets, that they were dropping them off, and I was just kinda curious if that. If that's what you guys were seeing, cuz it's, it's very shameful when you have a pet and you love a pet and then people just to give up the pet because they're now going to work and.
Yeah, sadly, they are considered recyclable. They get them when they're convenient for them.
Okay, I appreciate you clarifying, thank you.
Councilmember Compost.
Uh, yeah, just, uh, I'm sure Zach could probably comment on this, but I think it's probably. The intent of a two-year contract is probably to help build some of that relationship and show proof positive that the Benton Franklin Humane Society can perform as agreed. Zach, do you know if you're planning on doing any sort of contract extensions? Building into that, cuz that would be a way to, again, not, it's not necessarily two-year, you have a two-year plus or a two-year, three-year plus, so. Something, something that I, that could, could be amenable and might be more attractive to somebody who's a veterinary student maybe coming out, but. I don't wanna be here for a year, I wanna be there for, for more than that, and it's built in, so, Zach.
Yeah, I think our focus right now is extending this emergency contract at this point, um then just assesses the, as the contract takes its course. Excellent.
I just wanna mention real quickly, the Benton Franklin Humane Society is the one that had the hire for the, or for the veterinarian, so. Even if this partnership doesn't move forward, we'll still have a vet at the end of the day too, so. Um, that was our plan. It's our five-year LRP, long-range plan is to get the, the medical team at the facility.
Oh, that's a great clarification. Thank you for bringing that up.
Councilwoman Roach, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor, for asking. I'm just listening for now.
Thank you. Well, thank you again for the presentation, Director Racki, thank you. Um, and I think we'll. Wait on that response to see how we move forward with your recommendations.
Thank you.
And with that, we move on to our next item, which is the resolution for Process Water Reuse Facility BIAS?
BUSE.
BUSE, Release of Interest Agreement, Director Worley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, and good evening. Uh, this uh agreement has been uh a little long in the works, and it tends to get a little complicated, so I'm gonna try to make it as simple as I can. Up on the screen, you'll see a map that references the parcels that we'll be talking about. Uh, you can see where on the right side it says Pasco PWRF, it points to that parcel in the middle, that's where our existing facility is. We currently have the uh east forty acres in storage ponds. And then, of course, the USBR parcels are on the north of that and then on the south of that. And then Mr. BUSE, who we are uh getting this agreement with, are the parcels north of the north USBR parcel. Okay, so just for a matter of reference. So as council has heard from staff in the past, the PWRF needs to grow. Um, we've got a lot more processors who wanna grow, we've got a new dairy processor coming in. And we need bigger treatment capacity, we need more storage capacity for the winter, and we need more disposal capacity, meaning land to put the water on. All of that can't fit within the existing parcel that the city has. So what we did was we looked at the parcels on both the north and south of us, and they're owned by the United States Bureau of Reclamation. So we reached out to them and said, would you be wi- willing to sell that to the city? They said, yes, we'd be willing to. The south parcel, no problem, no one else is interested. The north parcel, we do have one farmer, Mr. BUSE, who has also expressed an interest in writing. To purchase that property as well because he would like to expand his farming operation because he uses his crops to feed cattle. He also has a cattle operation. With that, uh, because there are two people uh interested in it, then the USBR said, you're gonna have to put it up for auction. And it'll take us about a year to get there, and we said, well, we don't have that kinda time. So what we did was we reached out to Mr. BUSE and we said, Mr. BUSE, what would it take for you to remove your interest and let us buy the property? And so we started negotiations on it, and what you have before you tonight is the agreement that we've gotten negotiated so far. Uh, I wanted to mention that there are three main elements to this agreement. The first one is that the. Uh, Mr. BUSE wants to, or in the city is agreeing, to lease one of our PWRF circles to him in the twenty-twenty-three growing season. He'd like to grow a crop for his cattle feed. The second part of the agreement is if we are able to get ecology approval. To add Mr. BUSE's property to our land treatment system, basically expand it. Then we will pay him two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars so that he can go put a pivot on his parcel. Just to the west of the green parcel, so it's kind of a brown parcel that, to the west, it says BUSE parcel, he'd like to put a new circle on that property. So if you're gonna give up interest on the USBR parcel, he wants to be able to have a pivot put on it and he would like us to pay for that. And then we would use reuse water to go through that pivot and grow his crops. Third part of the agreement is that if we do not get permission from ecology to expand our land treatment system. Then we would pay him three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and he walks away, we walk away, we get the property. And we move forward with expanding the PWRF. So I wanted to kinda give you an idea of what the cost of the ponds are relative to the north parcel and the south parcel. If we were to put about three hundred and sixty-one million gallons of storage on the north parcel. It's about twenty-one million dollars. If we were to put those uh same amount of storage on the south parcel, it would be about sixty-two million dollars. And the reason is is because the lower south parcel is lower in elevation, and it requires pump stations then to get the water from those lower ponds. Up to the treatment system. And it adds to, up to the IPS that pumps it out to the fields. So the north parcel is higher in elevation, most of the water coming in from the processors and Dairy Gold will come into those north ponds. And then it's easier for us to get that water by gravity to the IPS. So it's a significant difference. We did look at another alternative. Which ended up, the north parcel would cost us about twenty-nine million and the south parcel would only cost fifty-four million. But you can see that that's either a three times more or just under two times more to put the ponds on the south parcel than it is the north parcel. So we feel like this is a good uh uh agreement. We believe it's in the best interest of the city and in the best interest of our processors to move forward with the, this agreement. To pay Mr. BUSE for his release of interest and then proceed with the procurement of the property from the USBR. And right now, we are moving forward on the south property. Technically, we have one more eighty-acre parcel up to the northeast that we're pursuing. Um, if we can get this agreement signed by both parties and to the USBR. We can include that north parcel in the process. They've already started on the other two parcels, and that would be critical for us because we are trying to get. All of these improvements completed by the time Dairy Gold gets their new plant up and running in a couple of years. And it takes quite a while for us to get all that designed and constructed, so. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Compost.
Uh, thank you, Director Worley. I'm glad you made your last comments cuz I was gonna ask a little bit. I'm in favor of this, but I was starting to think, are we maybe putting the cart before the horse a little bit, but yeah, I think you all clarified that. I do wanna ask though, where are we at with Dairy Gold as far as bringing things in? If they're a couple of years out. I understand this process could take a few years, but. But again, if if there's other things that need to go in place before Dairy Gold even comes here, fire station. If, if, if that's not in place either, I mean, again, I I'm in favor of this, I just, I've got, it's got me thinking, uh probably a little bit like Protam Maloney. In terms of how do we? Where, where all the pieces flowing, so if you could just illustrate that for me a little bit, maybe give me some more directive or uh on Dairy Gold, that would be helpful.
You bet. Um, Dairy Gold uh is starting to move forward. They purchased the property from the port. And uh we are meeting with them often, and they are starting to move forward on the design of the rail spur that goes into their site. And they are starting to look at a massive grading plan for their entire site. They're also looking at where to place the facilities, how to orient them, and how to tie in all the utilities associated with it. Including sending their wastewater streams to the reuse facility. Right now, their schedule shows them possibly starting the startup of the plant at around November of twenty-twenty-three. And of course, when you start it up, it's kind of a start, stop, start, stop, clean, fix, da-da-da-da-da. And so they look to probably be fully operational around March of twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think that probably helps me cuz I was imagining that you're maybe twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five-ish, but that's quite a bit sooner than, than in my mind, so. Uh, again, I do, I am in support of this moving forward. I just wanted to get some context.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, uh Director Worley for this, and and we spoke a little bit earlier, so I, you answered a number of my questions earlier, I appreciate that, just clarifications on this. Um, I I agree that I'm also in support, and this is one of those areas where, um. We, as Pasco, have had a history over the last twenty-ish years of growth happening to us. Um, it's been residential growth primarily, has been our um Achilles' heel. Um, and at this stage, we're seeing that commercial growth is also um outpacing our strategic planning. For what per, what properties will have, what improvements will have to various facilities and and such, so. Um, I think this is one of the costs of, of that reality. Um, understanding that the jobs being provided, the additional tax base for the facility, et cetera. Um, and the fact that the uh Process Water Use Facility funds are part of this whole mix and conversation, um are all really important here. To expand on what my fellow councilmember Compost was saying, um. I I would be really interested in understanding the larger picture of not just this facility, but this, there's more. It's Dairy Gold's just one piece, there's, we're gonna be more and more and more, and I I don't feel like I have a full understanding of the plan. Um, I suspect you and other staff members do. Um, if there's some way you could outline to us, here are all the pieces that have to happen. Here's when they're happening. And here's what it did, and here's how much capacity that allows us to grow into with additional um, agro processing facilities that we're expecting to see in the future as well. Um, if we can get that picture, I'm not asking for it tonight. That'd be, I mean.
I could give you a verbal picture right off the top of my head.
We had a white, if we had a whiteboard and some white lines and markers, right?
And I I had, I I unfortunately didn't get a very good image to be able to explain this to you, to John, early enough. So it didn't get on the screen tonight, and I apologize for that. Um, first off, the first phase of this project is to extend the water line, a potable water line and electrical, increased electrical service to the reuse facility. That project is about ninety percent designed and will go out to bid this year and under construction this year. The second phase of the project are the storage ponds. And so this is where we're trying to acquire this property so that we can start figuring out, are the ponds gonna be on the north parcel or on the south parcel? And then, we've already got layouts of all of the pond options and what the estimated costs are now. But we're working to try to figure out how to reduce those costs by finding places to put excess material. Because when you dig a big hole, you gotta go put the dirt somewhere. So we're working on that right now and we're probably looking at other parcels to properly per- purchase and then maybe store the material there or something. Uh, so that project will probably go out to bid later this year for construction through the winter and then through next year in twenty twenty-three. The idea is to have at least one of the ponds completed fully so that if the pre-treatment facility that we talked about in a previous uh, presentation related to the RNG, the renewable natural gas, that we can put the water in the pond temporarily until the final pre-treatment process is is done and then feed that water into the pre-treatment process. So we're working on contingency plans in order to assure Dairy Gold that, yes, we've got you covered. Uh, the third thing is then the um, pre-treatment system. And that's the one we talked about earlier with uh, Sustainable Energy Ventures. Um, we just went through an RFP process. Two industries, our two uh, developers proposed on ours. We ended up selecting SEV because they had the better proposal. And so they are ready to start now. Um, but again, this agreement and knowing that we have this property, we may take their anaerobic digester proposal and renewable natural gas plant. We may put it up on this parcel. It may make more sense because of gravity and where it's located to put it on this north parcel than it is to put it next to our existing ponds. So again, a lot of this is just being held up from just completely moving forward until we know whether or not we've got this parcel.
Thank you. Should we just, oh.
Oh, sorry, I was gonna say, um, if I could get like a project, a high-level project schedule and like two maps, I think I would be able to. I understood every word you said and in fifteen minutes, I've forgotten most of them. So, um, you can just draw, draw me a, draw me a picture in crayon. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
So Councilwoman Torres and then Councilmember Compos.
Um, if you can just share how you calculated the two hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty for Mr. Buse?
You bet. We estimated that the cost of a pivot is about two hundred thousand dollars. And that's based on us operating our own fourteen pivots on on the own farm operations that we have. Uh, the fifty-eight thousand is basically the annual rent for circle number ten. So we're actually paying Mr. Buse so that he can pay us rent back. Cuz this is a, this is a no cost to him kind of situation. He's, he's giving up something and he needs to get something in return.
Mr. Buse is a very shrewd businessman. Um, talking about moving dirt. Why don't you put it on the south parcel and build it up? That way you don't have to build pumps if you have to use it ever again.
That's an option. There is one problem is that we have a Bonneville power line that bisects the property diagonally.
Just cut the power. I'm kidding. Um, okay.
And we have to stay out of the easement, so we're building ponds on both sides of the power line. And so, we may do that, we may not. I'll make a few phone calls.
Councilmember, uh, Serrano.
Thank you. Uh, just a quick question. I see that a lot of this is contingent on permitting through ecology occurring by March of twenty-three. How are we looking on that?
We are looking pretty good. We have uh, RH two on board right now to develop the um, engineering report and facility plan that is needed to get ecology approval. Uh, we meet quarterly with ecology and we share with them everything that's going on with our wastewater treatment plant and with this facility. And we are constantly working with them and they're working with us to make sure we're gonna get this thing permitted and ready to go. Um, they are excited about what we're proposing with the anaerobic digester and the renewable natural gas. They recognize that in order for us to manage the wastewater and dispose of it, we need more property. So they are excited about our ability to buy more property or utilize more property in Mr. Buse's case to help expand the final treatment and disposal of the wastewater.
Thank you. It seems that the the savings of the ninety-one thousand dollars and change aside from meeting a permitting time, uh, really the benefit to the city of taking that earlier process is he will fully relinquish his rights that. Yeah, that might help us sleep better. So I appreciate that.
Thank you for that. Uh, Councilwoman Roach, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, no comments, but I do wanna just echo what council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem had said, which was uh, a visual verbally tracking the the plans is a little bit, uh, a little bit difficult. But I am pretty fuzzy-headed this evening, uh, battling some sinus infection, so I a visual of of the, you know, the steps in this plan would would be great. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you. Well, looks like no further comment. And um, looks like you are also expecting uh, to have this on the May sixteenth agenda.
Correct. This, uh, as Mr. Worley was talking about previously, this is a very complicated uh, situation. And we're trying to navigate, we're working with uh, legally, uh, complicated, I should say. Uh, it's not, it's not engineering, but uh, we're trying to get around uh, some issues. We've got, it's a three-party agreement, so we've got some consideration issues we're trying to navigate. And then there's uh, also the, uh, there's a couple of uh, future agreements. And so we're having to try to find a way to uh, draft it in such a way so that it's clear that those are enforceable. Uh, cuz technically, you're not supposed to uh, agree to agree someday. So uh, it's, it's pretty complicated. But uh, we're working through it and um, yeah, we'll be ready to go.
All right. Well, thank you for that. And with no further comment, we move on to our last item on the agenda. The resolution, uh, council goals for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, City Manager Dave.
Okay, good evening again, Mayor Council. So for your consideration tonight are the draft twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, uh, city council goals. And uh, I'll note for the public, the draft uh, before you is one of the major projects uh, of the, of your recent council retreat. Uh, his draft goals, just to give some background, are a product of the better part of a day of council effort, uh, which was informed by ongoing public input over the course of the last couple of years. Uh, the results of the nat- recent national uh, uh, community survey, the community listening sessions, uh, including a business listening session hosted by the Pasco Chamber of Commerce uh, earlier this year. City council goals, uh, for the benefit of the public are something the city's been doing on an annual basis for about a quarter of a century. Uh, the adopted goals are used to drive strategic planning efforts, uh, forward community priorities that come forward in in some of these uh, forums the council has hosted. Uh, they drive capital projects, services, programs uh, through the biennial budget. And in fact, uh, the adoption of the council goals are technically the first major step of the budget process uh, that will be uh, conducting uh, later this year. Goals have evolved uh, over the years, looking, if you look far back at the council goals, just uh, from a historical perspective, you'll, you'll see a list of projects, basically. Uh, some of them are even tasks, weren't even necessarily a goal, they were a task or maybe an objective. Uh, build a Lewis Street overpass was one of them. You look a little closer, you'll see a mix of projects and initiatives. Reduce crime, build a Lewis Street overpass. It's kinda how they, what the structure was. And then over the last three or four cycles, council began to kind of broaden, uh, getting a little bit higher up in their goal setting, ten to thirty thousand's uh, foot level. And uh, developed some general areas like quality of life, financial sustainability, community transportation network, community safety, economic vitality, uh, community identity. But uh, you know, I'll note that regardless of the form, the long-term application of a strategic goal set by council uh, over the past twenty years, five years is uh, has allowed the organization to be focused. And that's the purpose of the goals. It's allowed us to be focused and uh, and has allowed the city to be able to point to an impressive record of accomplishment over the last quarter of a century. Particularly given uh, some of the external forces associated with growth on the city. The latest draft uh, iteration represents a bit of a further evolution on the council's part. Uh, the efforts here taking into account much broader bodies of work than specific projects in in most cases. Yeah, projects or bodies of work that are being performed by the city through its, through a very public process, whether that's at the planning commission level, Parks and Rec Board, on up through the city council. So we have a number of plans identified, uh, not only the plan being a goal to implement that plan and the impl- and develop implementation plans where we don't have a plan yet adopted. Uh, plans like the Transportation System Master Plan, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Uh, little finer level at uh, downtown plan and Broadmoor Plan are identified in their Fire Master Plan, Police Master Plan that talks about uh, future stations and future programs and facilities needed for those uh, operations. Uh, Parks Recreation Open Space Base Plan that we're working on right now, the Housing Action Plan, also something really important. The regional effort on the implementation of the point zero one percent uh, for mental health and how that impacts uh, uh, certain communities in the, in our, in our uh, commu- in our city. Uh, and a community engagement plan as well as connecting our community through culture and art. Uh, events like uh, Cinco de Mayo this past week being a huge uh, uh, demonstration of that and uh, Juneteenth next month coming right up. So, so draft goals, uh, they're included in the packet. Uh, staff's encouraging council discussion tonight and direction and our intent, uh, depend- depending on the feedback we get uh, would be to revise them as discussed tonight and bring them back for your adoption next week.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments from our council? Councilmember Compos?
Again, lots to say tonight, I guess. Um, just wanna go back to the community identity, uh, back to the Cinco de Mayo thing was super awesome to go down there. I wasn't expecting to see uh, Ms. Pashawn down there. I was very excited though because she stopped to talk to me and had me circle some, some themes, if you will, that uh, looking for potential artwork in downtown. Um, and I thought that was pretty cool that, that, you know, I think she, the staff has taken what we've said to consideration is already starting to work on some of the recommendations we talked about in our workshop. And again, I think it's really important. And and we should be happy with ourselves. We did a really great job on consolidating that giant list into these manageable, broad ideas. You know, the staff is going to run with whatever we we talk about on these. And this gives us an ability to kind of be flexible with our thought process. If a need arises, we can, you know, satisfy it. So again, su- super excited to see what what happens. Um, Dave, I know I've reached out to you once or twice about uh, you know, potential artwork things. And you're saying that we are go to meet some sort of September uh, goal for at least Mike Miller is looking at, at doing something with some signage. Okay, so I'm just, I don't have anything. My focus is really big on the arts and culture in the downtown right now, so.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Maloney.
Thank you. And thank you, Dave, for for all the staff work to put this together and to support the whole, whole process here. Um, I'll certainly echo the comment of every time I look back at those goals there and I can't read a one of them, it it, I'll be honest, it bothers me. Um, I looked at and I go, well, our goals are so specific and there's so many of them that how can we possibly measure whether or not we move towards them tonight? Um, and we probably did because there's so many of them. Um, I mean, that's not really, that's not what a set of goals um, needs to be. That's not how the strategy works. Um, and so I really appreciate the uh, the much more consolidated version of this. Um, I have some minor editorial comments. Dave, are you looking for those tonight or do you want me to send you a quick email?
It it might be more efficient for a quick email.
Yeah, that's like two, so they're, they're pretty small, but also I'll send you, I don't think.
Yeah, unless they're not substantive, so.
Yeah, they're, 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 they're don't change the, 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 the tone of it, I don't think. The one, one question or comment I would make is that, um, we do talk, we do call it the Arts and Culture Commission specifically. And I am, I am excited about the artwork that they're, that they're working on and the uh, various proclamations they've brought to, brought to us and the work that they're doing. Um, but they're also the only commission out of the, what, dozen and a half commissions and uh, boards that we have as a, as a city that we're calling out specifically. And I wonder whether we can at least broaden that to other agencies. For example, the work the DPA did, that's the, the cultural celebrations they did in downtown were not the work of the Arts and Culture Commission. Um, but still were significant for cultural um, recognition in the community. So a little bit of, of tweaking on some of the verbiage there, I think would be, would be well-served. Um, otherwise, I think we hit the, we hit the big points. And when you talk to people about what they need out of Pasco, I think we're covering, we're covering the items here. And for people who are concerned that these are too high-level and aren't specific enough to be able to hold our, our own feet to the fire, um, that's also what our budget's for. We have a CIP that talks about our, our capital facilities that we're going to be funding. We have an annual, we have a biennial budget. In that, we specifically talk about what we're funding and the staff does, it goes through great lengths to spell out, here's where your money is going. And that's where the rubber meets the road. And so I, I, I wanna say that, you know, think this is at the right level. And and um, if you wanna hold our feet to the fire, go look at our budget and find out where we're planning on spending money. And if you don't like that, come talk to us. We control the budget and we can control where that money goes. If we need to fix something, that's, that's our job, um, to fix that. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember, uh, Serrano.
Thank you. Still me. Um, just two comments. The SEVA mitigation measures, I'm not sure uh, what that message portrays to the community or to our development community. Um, if I were a developer, I think that's just another way to charge them. Um, but a- again, I, I don't know, this is one to get hung up on. I will say, well, point number three, I am a little concerned that we have an implement, Housing Action Implementation Plan with focus on strategies that emphasize affordable housing. While we need more affordable housing, that's not a question. To say that we're gonna focus and emphasize on that, um, I feel like that's putting a billboard out there, come to Pasco, we have affordable housing or we'll make it happen. Uh, it's a critical element to our future growth. But I think that we need to maybe uh, address a lack of affordable housing. Um, so I guess that's, maybe it's a very nuanced point. But again, to, to see focus and emphasize, and then the term affordable housing there, it just, it, it, to me, we hit a need, but I think it also, again, sends, potentially sends the wrong message. So again, maybe addresses the lack of affordable housing, something of that nature that says we're taking action, but it's not the focus or the emphasis, sole, em- em- sole emphasis. Thank you.
Councilmember Mill?
Yeah, just quick, thank you, Mayor. Uh, quick comment. Yeah, I do agree with uh, Councilmember Serrano on that. Um, but overall, I just wanted to also say that I was very proud the staff came up with such a good uh, plan. I don't sometimes say how much, how proud I am of Pasco, but uh, I did really think it, it nailed everything that uh, our, uh, what we talked about and I just thought it was uh, really good. And as a business owner, I really liked it. It was, gave some flexibility is what uh, our other council members have talked about. But uh, it was also, in my opinion, it, it hit everything that I think that we talked about during our council retreat. So I just wanna say, very good job. I really liked it. And again, whoever did all this, I, I think it's uh, very well-written. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Roach, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor. You're, you're telepathic tonight. I was, was wanting to chime in here and just say that, um, you know, give credit where credit is due. Uh, last weekend was a, a really great moment for Pasco and just having a return to events. But the reason why we had such a beautiful downtown Peanuts Park, Lewis Street overpass was because of previous councils decades before us that really put their effort and budget towards that and made it a goal. And so while we may have outgrown our old goals on the back wall that are tiny and fine in print, um, I do wanna just give a nod to those that, that had the vision of um, prioritizing downtown in the way that they did, um, because. Um, because there was a lot of compliments paid, um, and I feel like I was partially the undue recipient of, of those goals of that work that came before us. So just want to say that. I want to say that I feel like the staff did a great job of taking a look at, you know, hearing what, what came out of our retreat. Um, and really whittling down what we had to what we now have before us. And I will echo what, um, Councilmember Maloney said in that we do have budget priorities that, that help to make it kind of like, um, railroad tracks. There's two different, you know, guiding paths there. Uh, but I do have some, some work, like wordsmithing that I'd like to offer up and I won't do it here. So I'll just send that via email. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And so again, just a, a comment of really, uh, praising staff that helped set these goals, condense them from, again, like everyone else has said, the long list in the back of the room that we cannot read, uh, to now viable, uh, more approachable, more friendly looking, uh, um, goals. Um, and again, to extend the invite, as Mayor Portem Maloney has said, um, to the public, if there's any questions or comments, uh, or suggestions regarding how we're utilizing the funding, please bring forward your comments, questions, and again, suggestions. Thank you. And with that, we move on.
Yeah, I'll just say we'll, we'll look forward to hearing from, uh, uh, Councilmember Maloney, Councilmember, uh, Roach. And any other council member feels, uh, inclined to shoot us a couple of comments on what's presented, we're happy to take those into account and, and, uh, look forward to presenting this in the final form next week for you.
Thank you for that. Okay. So moving on to item six on our agenda, miscellaneous council discussion, City Manager.
Just a, a number of announcements, uh, just, I'll try to get through them quickly, given the hour, but, uh, reminder, A W C conference, June twenty-one to twenty-four in Vancouver. Uh, that's a pretty beneficial conference for, uh, council members, a lot of, and particularly a summer conference, uh, is a go, a good one to go through. It's more educational, uh, and municipal, uh, service oriented than, than the legislative conference in February. So that's again, in Vancouver, twenty-one to twenty-four. If you're interested, please, uh, let April know. She'll get you registered. Uh, other thing April wanted me to talk a little bit about is we're, we're getting a lot of, a lot more requests than we have, uh, in quite a long time for ribbon cuttings and events, and those are kind of piling up, putting a lot of heat on the mayor, I know. And, uh, so we're going to try to get, uh, flyers and printouts on those in your Monday mail folders. So you're aware of them as they come up. Yeah, we have two ribbon cuttings this week, as a matter of fact, Columbia Riverwalk Apartments, the new apartments down off Road twenty. Uh, we've, this Friday from, at one P M. And then, uh, Fun to Learn, uh, will be Saturday, uh, the fourteenth at eleven thirty. So a couple this week, just, uh, on your calendars. But again, we're trying to get a little bit of a process for you. So you, you get early, early notification and try to make those. And, uh, be kind to the mayor. If she calls you, please say yes. So. Uh, Memorial Day celebration, wanted to mention that, May thirtieth, uh, Councilmember Serrano, I, I think is going to help officiate that, but, uh, May thirtieth, eleven A M. at the City View Cemetery. And then, uh, also, uh, return. Uh, we haven't had this for three years now, return to the volunteer appreciation, uh, lunch, some barbecue this year, so, uh, Saturday, June fourth, it'll be right out in our commons here, uh, at City Hall in the courtyard. So we're excited to be able to do that again. Uh, COVID kind of knocked us down a couple of years. Uh, so we have a lot to be appreciative for because our volunteers, you know, to the extent they could, kept coming, whether that was virtual or some of them in person. Uh, also want to, you know, we, we talked a little, quite a bit about, um, the Cinco de Mayo, uh, this evening and, and, uh, well, that was a great, uh, community event. I think, uh, the community members really saw that as a success and numbers, uh, Officer Ray Apprecio, Apparicio made the comment, it's bigger than he's ever seen it. And I think he's been to them for the last fourteen or fifteen years. And, uh, that was his comment on Saturday. And as the deputy mayor mentioned, uh, or Mayor Portem mentioned, we have had, we had sustained crowds all the way through. I mean, I, I was there Sunday at probably five fifteen and there were still probably four or five hundred people there in the, in the area. Uh, so it just went strong all the way through the weekend. Uh, you know, after three years, we knew it was going to be big, but we also knew there would be a lot of gaps to fill. And I want to just do a little bit of a shout out to city staff and public works and A C N S, ZAC crew, uh, Community and Economic Development, uh, particularly Mike Gonzalez, who I think spent probably seventy hours downtown last week. Uh, uh, Police Department, uh, they went way beyond the norm, uh, that we normally have to, to make D P D A access, uh, helped them be a success. And, uh, I, I wanted to shout out and recognize those departments and those folks because they, they really did a great job. Uh, we got some great feedback on, uh, Peanuts Farmer's Market. Uh, Councilmember Roach, you do get some credit for that. You also get credit for the bad stuff too, that's been lingering for a few years. So just keep that in mind. That's the, one of the benefits of being one of the new people. But, uh, uh, the design, I think, for the park though, I, I'll note, really proved out. There, there were some electrical things. Part of that, I think, may be, uh, facility related, you know, maybe there's some things that could be improved that also could be education related. I know there was a lot of electrical, uh, out there that wasn't even being used. So, you know, part of, part of that, I think, is just brand new park, staff, our own staff, as well as, uh, D P D A staff, understanding what's even available out there.
City Manager Zabel, if I could just interrupt for a moment, I, I wasn't going to offer that up in this space today because I just wanted it to be totally positive because it was so overwhelmingly positive. But I did see one person trip over an extension cord that was behind like a food truck or something. And I was just thinking rubber stripping on top of electrical cords or something. Like I, I had noted that to myself as like a feedback to give, but, and now I'm giving it here, although I said I wouldn't, but you brought it up first.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. But, uh, I, I did want to just note the, the design of the park itself really proved out. I think we have probably one of the most functional and desirable outdoor venues in the region now, which is really exciting, uh, and the fact that it's in our downtown. Uh, the other thing I'll note, uh, plug for the C I P is the concept for a festival street on Fourth Street, uh, between Lewis and Columbia was very apparent. And so you might see that on, on our C I P wishlist to you later in the year. And, uh, uh, all in all, I think, a great event. Uh, the other thing I wanted to note, we did get a, a message, I think all council got it, but just a reminder. Uh, so the onsite tours at Hanford had been shut down during COVID. And, uh, these are tours that, uh, that help elected officials and the certain city staff members to, to, uh, get updates, uh, on the cleanup progress, uh, that, that it's occurring at the site. Uh, with case numbers down, the site management has determined that it's safe to re- redo those, uh, or, uh, excuse me, uh, start those, uh, tours back up in person. And, uh, they're wanting to start with council members and city managers, uh, for each of the four cities. Uh, an opportunity to take a guided tour. They've been doing it virtually, but, uh, it's a lot different when you're on the ground, take a look at them. Uh, they've asked each city if they're, uh, what level of interest there might be in coming out because they want to do some planning, uh, for this. They'll be putting out several dates depending what kind of feedback we get. So I'd, I'd like a little bit of feedback tonight if there's interest. And before you tell me you're interested or not, it's a four-hour commitment. Just when you get there, it's a four-hour commitment. So you got time getting there and time leaving and time in the parking lot, talking with other council members about what you saw. So you're probably talking five and a half hours by the time you're done. Uh, it would be, uh, most likely during a work day, Monday through Thursday. Uh, you'd include stops at several, uh, sites, the wastewater, the white wastewater treatment plant, the tanks, tank side, uh, cesium removal facility. And, uh, the groundwater pump and treatment facility and others. So probably see Old Hanford and some other things like that along the way too. So asking council if there's a level of interest, if there's four or five of you, we can, we can advertise it. Uh, you don't have to all go together on the same, um, tour. You'd be able to go with other council members from other cities if you want to do that. I think they're just trying to get a sense of how can we get groups of probably six to eight people out here and, and get all the council members through this so they can kind of see what's going on out here. It's two billion dollars a year happening out there. Yeah, more than two and a half, excuse me, more than two billion a year happening out there. And, and, uh, you know, they want to make sure that, uh, our elected officials are aware of the scope. So.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Campos?
Highly encourage you guys to come see me at work. Love to have you guys out there. Uh, on that regard, if, if they don't do the B Reactor tour on the same tour, I was telling Councilman Torres about it, worthwhile, super cool history, how that whole plant was run, um, well worth it. You get to see some old Hanford as well. Uh, I would encourage anybody to do that. Um, I, I may skip it since I've seen quite, quite a bit and I help support the tank side cesium, uh, but I, I may also, because you still learn something new every single time you go out. So, um, I'll put me as a soft yes for that. But then going back to, I don't want to put you on the spot here, Dave. Going back to your email, I know that D P D A and Cinco de Mayo seem like a huge success at the surface level, but I want to go back to your email. And this might not be the appropriate place to discuss it, but at some point, I'd like a brief on what's going on behind the scenes because it, it didn't sound, sound good.
But yeah, on, on that, we're, you know, we'll, we'll be doing kind of an after-action, uh, effort this week and then we'll be meeting with D P D A probably sometime next week to, to evaluate it. And I'd be happy to, once we've kind of gone through that process, update council.
Excellent. Thank you. I would go for the comments.
Thank you for that. Um, so Councilmember Mill?
I'd be a hard yes as far as going up to the Hanford site. I'd love to do that. Um, and then I did get some questions as far as, uh, on Cinco de Mayo, as far as people complained, there was no bathrooms as far as like porta-potties before the parade. Um, I mean, I know that's not our thing since it's run by the D P D A, but, uh, I just want to give a heads out that maybe if you got all these people waiting around for an hour that's maybe for kids and stuff like that, it might be good to have a, a facility or signs or something. Uh, I'm just throwing that out there because I said, I don't know what to do. It's not my responsibility. So just throwing it out there. So, thank you.
Um, oh, so you could have gave him a ride on your bike.
I could have.
The porta potty. There was tons at the peanuts park. Um, I have a hard yes as well. I did the virtual tour the, about a week and a half ago. And I'm sure it's definitely not the same, but, so I would definitely like to go in person.
And that's a yes for me. I also did the, the virtual tour with you. I had already told Ridge, uh, Gil, that I would be attending and extending the invite. So yes, that is a yes for me.
I'm going to go with a no on this one. I've been, I've gone to maybe a dozen different tours. I used to support the, um, actually re- facility, the, the rehabilitation of the historical buildings. Um, I've been to B Reactor half a dozen times. Um, I, I've, it, it's worth it every time. I, I swear, every time I go there, they've opened up new rooms. They've brought in new artifacts. Um, I think I'm at the point of diminishing returns right now and I have a net debt of obligation. So I'm going to beg out, but I would, I would encourage, um, if they're interested in having some senior staff come out there as well. It is a really interesting and worthwhile tour, especially when you talk about some of the historic buildings and the National Park Service and what they've taken over that is really important part of the tourism, uh, that, that can be provided for the area here. So there's a great economic development opportunity in addition to everything else. Um, and again, over, it's something like two and a half billion dollars of money pumped out in the economy. So whenever you see that, that, that massive wave of people coming from West Pasco heading over to Richland, um, that's, that's Hanford, Hanford dollars that are paying for those people's houses and their, their expenditures in the city. So, um, it's, it is still a major economic driver for this area. So do definitely get educated, applied. I feel like council members are making that commitment. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Any further comment? Well, I do, I do want to add, um, there, like you said, there are several events coming up, uh, ribbon cuttings especially. Um, I cannot commit to every single one and I would appreciate some assistance from any of the council members that have an hour, maybe just swing by for thirty minutes and help out if you can. Uh, I would appreciate that greatly.
Happy to help.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And with that, we do have need for executive session, correct?
Yeah. Real estate information, uh, that I was looking for earlier today, but we do have, we, we can, uh, discuss the second part, which is probably about fifteen minutes rather than the twenty-five.
Okay. So we will take a five-minute break and then, um, head into executive session. And with that, um.
Madam Mayor, could, could we recite the R C W for that executive?
Yes, I was, I was headed to that.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Um, so, um, we do have need for executive session, consideration of site selection or acquisition of real estate purchase or lease if likelihood, uh, that disclosure would increase price per R C W forty-two point three zero point one one zero one B and per. The performance. I will strike the real estate, uh, R C W and performance of a public employee per R C W forty-two point three zero point one one, one one zero, one G for fifteen minutes. Uh, so we will meet until nine twenty. So that includes a five-minute break.
Would propose, uh, Director White.
Nine twenty-five.
Director White and the Deputy City Manager.
Joined by our, um, um, Deputy City, our city manager, sorry, our deputy city manager and, uh, our attorney. Director White. Everyone out listed. Good evening, everyone. We will be extending our executive session for five, four, five more minutes. So, we'll be resuming at nine thirty. Thank you.